2022, we will start with 3.1, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to move, oh, pardon me. All right, we're going to move to 4.1, approval of the agenda for July 18th, 2022. Is there any discussion? Hearing none?
Austin.
Aye.
Lea Wolf.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
That is six i votes.
All right, we will move to 5.1, President's Comments. Hang on a second here. All right, public comments will occur during the public comments portion of the meeting. The Board will not allow interruption during the meeting. If you're interested in addressing the Board, fill out the required public participation at the Board Meeting Form and submit to Ms. Hammers. Please email your name, your phone number, or topic of discussion or agenda item to boe@sps186.org if you wish to participate via telephone. And moving on to 6.1, Superintendent's Report.
Okay, well, we've got our celebration. Always great summertime celebrations. If you go to the first slide, that is a picture of Board Member Austin and Board Member Miller and I, we were hitting the road, doing a, and I will say, I walked. This man on my right ran in the very warm sun last Saturday, but we had a great time for our first annual One Springfield for Unity event. And we had our State's Attorney with us, and then also Alderman Gregory. They were really the people who spearheaded the whole event and put things together. And it was a great day. We had a lot of kids and families out. Many of them went off on bikes first, and then the runners would go, and then the walkers. But, you know, I'm reminded how beautiful that very nice nature trail is behind the southeast baseball fields. Mr. Wend is in the background there as well. Thanks for coming out, Mr. Mensch, and several of our district family from across the district. So it was just a great thing. All the funding that they got that day went to the Boys and Girls Club. And I don't know how they'll do it in the past, but they just want it to grow exponentially. We have people out there that didn't want to walk or run, but they volunteered or just came and showed their support. So it was a great way to start off my Saturday. And then I went down to the farmer's market, and Kid's EM was having their fourth birthday party. So the next slide is me making a T-shirt with Lakeisha Purchase. And then we're celebrating the Kid's EM's birthday, and there were kids everywhere. It was a lot of fun. They not only had things going on inside, but they had things in their activity rooms and also out front where they were doing scooter races and things like that. And they incorporated it out into the farmer's market. So it was a nice day and a lot of fun to be out and about Saturday morning. Teachers and staff are preparing already. We have people coming to our Instructional Resource Center to laminate and get things ready for their classroom. When I was a teacher, I always liked to do that in my shorts and T-shirt and just, you know, have that stuff out of the way. But this is Mrs. Dunn from DuBois Elementary School, and she was out getting some things ready for her classroom. So we just thank all of the teachers who we know are home for the summer, but yet they're preparing and thinking ahead to make it a great and amazing school year. If you go on to the next picture, we had the Memorial Health Championship Golf Tournament in our community this past week. LRS is also one of their primary sponsors. But on Monday morning, they actually went to Beichen's School where they were, had the Urban League Summer School Program running, and they actually did all kinds of activities with the students. They got to meet some of the pro golfers. And Dr. Florence was there from Memorial Health, who's one of their doctors on staff. And they just had a great time kind of sharing their joy for what they do in golf. They have putt-putt and all kinds of cool stuff. So Memorial really did it up nicely for them, and every kid got some swag bags and materials. So these are awesome pictures from that event. Speaking of getting news out to the families, we have a brand-new District 186 app and a brand-new website. You may have gotten some communication about that last week, about how to download that app, and we really encourage it. The app in the past was with just things like put onto your phone, and you had to, we were trying to sign in, you had to, you know, scroll it up. So we know that this is something that's very exciting for our families and our community and overall. So we really encourage you to download the free app today and stay connected to District 186. Our family will receive important reminders, lunch menu information, sports schedules, family event updates, the times of those, and all of that's going to be at your fingertips. The app can be downloaded free through the Apple Store and also on Google Play. And you just search for Springfield District 186, and you can download it. So just something for you to think about over the summer before the school year starts. It might want to be the time that you do that.
That website is slick.
I know.
It's very nice.
It's pretty good.
It's a lot easier to find information.
And so we do have a guest in the crowd today, and I know we have Ms. Nelo Mitchell with us, but we also have Bree Hankins. And Nick Yerlum is on vacation tonight. But the three of them, over a long period of time, made sure we chose the right app. But then it has taken a lot of work to go onto our current website and see what we wanted to keep and how we wanted to change it, populate that information. And we also have Steve Mensch from our Technology Department. And all of the things that they've done to transfer it over the last week, I didn't know all the things that, all the bones and all the pieces that have to be in place to make a new website go live, but I've learned a lot. And we have Rachel Dias with us, who's been really helpful in getting all of this communication to families set up. So it was really a team effort. We know there might be some broken links right now as we go through all of, we just went live last week, we've got some broken links, and we've also got some things that were a little weird when you got a family message. I know it went to junk mail, but we're trying to work through all of those little things. That's why we do things in July, so that by the time school year starts, it's ready to go for balance calendar, and we're making sure that we fix all those little small things. But that's just growing pains of moving into something new. But we are pretty excited, and it will just continue to grow as the principals come back and get excited about what they see. They're going to populate more. We've got some ideas from Central Office. But the best thing ever, and again, I want to applaud our Technology Department. And Mr. Mensch, who's our, the head of that technology team, has been on staff there forever. We always had our own, like homepage. We created our homepage from scratch and did all of the programming behind it. But what we know is that things change every year, and to keep up with all of that is a lot. And the websites that you can purchase and partner with now are very slick and great. So we were able to do so with ease. But now all of the information that has ever been on our old website is still there. So if we forget something, or something didn't get moved, or there's a catalog of pictures that we still want to access, it's still there for us. It didn't go away. And so we're just very thankful that our website was out there in front of many districts for many years, and now it's time to kind of give it a new brand. So thank you, and I know Bree, it was part of your, "We need a new website" many years ago, and we've kind of gotten there, so we appreciate that. All right, this is your favorite, so I thought I'd bring it up, but if you want to step in, physicals and immunizations. We are required by law to have certain physicals and immunizations on record for every child. And actually, every year, there is a date where students can no longer attend if they don't have those. This has absolutely nothing to do with COVID. These are our main immunizations that have been on the book in our school code for many years. And any child that's entering kindergarten, actually the Early Learning Center kindergarten, sixth grade, or high school have to have a physical. And then if you play a fall sport, you need to get those physicals because you have to have those for a fall. If you, you know, if you're not in one of those grade levels, you don't play a sport till a little later, you may have a little bit more grace period. But this is not optional. This is something that we deal with, and we want to make sure our kids are in attendance. And we want to make sure they're in attendance every day, not interrupted because of this rule of not having the things in that they need. So call, make that appointment, look for opportunities to check out clinics in town that are offering physicals and immunizations, and get it done now. We're into the third week of July, and school's going to be starting, our balance calendar students are starting tomorrow. So we definitely need to get those in.
And I would say this is a great time to do it. I was in S.A.U. Family Medicine last week, and I think this is kind of their summer wall, so I guess what I'm trying to say, if you make the call, I'm sure you can get in very quickly, probably get any of these results right now. But don't wait until last week's school.
One group of students who often forget that they have a responsibility in this area is our students that are going into 12th grade. If you haven't had your second dose of the Minnetoka vaccine, and it's after your 16th birthday, now, every kid's all different. It depends on when you got your first one, when you can get your second one. But that seems to be a problem we have, and some of our seniors think I'm past all of that, but they then don't have this one vaccine that makes them have to sit out for a short time. So we hope that this year will be a little bit easier. Last year, there was a lack of vaccines in some places, but I don't think that's a problem this year. So just please, everybody, make sure that they get that taken care of.
What day are we required by law to exclude children from class?
Well, there's two ways of answering that question. One, this Board of Education has created a board policy that after the 10th day of their calendar, the students, and these are school days, so 10 school days after the first day of the school year, so this time it kind of lands the day after the, of the, I'm sorry, September 6th is the actual date for regular calendar, sorry. Balanced calendar is 10 days from their first day. So state, October 15th.
Thank you.
All right, first day of school, I think I just said that out loud. Balanced calendar schools are tomorrow for Graham and Southern View. And then traditional calendar schools, the best day of the year, Monday, August 22nd. So everybody loves the first day. Our schools are future update. It is so exciting. This is the front entrance to Black Hawk, so getting very close to a finished project. You can see on the right, there used to be an old art and music mobile, and it's now been moved over to Lampier High School to assist with any of the overflow or office space that they may need for some of the projects. So it's, you know, we're using our mobiles for a little bit because we need people, a place for people to go and be at Lampier, but Black Hawk is looking pretty awesome.
I'm surprised it was actually mobile. I'm surprised it was actually mobile.
Well, they use a very intricate truck system. They put use some tape.
Those things are just hanging on. You take these victory laps when they're gone, and then you see it pop up somewhere else. It's like, ah! I know, it's, we're phasing them out.
Yeah, this is just to make sure everybody's got the space they needed at Lampier, for sure. So if you move on to Butler, the new front doors are in. Of course, this isn't the way it'll look. There's going to be a canopy that's hung over those doors. But this is the front entrance into the school, and then obviously, everything will be graded and leveled so that it is ADA accessible there. But things are starting to win the windows go in, and they can close the doors. That's when a lot of good indoor stuff starts to happen. So we're excited. DuBois, this is also the sidewalk that goes along the school. They're preparing to pour the sidewalks on the south side of the building and also the new parking spaces. On the right, the painter is putting on a second coat of paint, and the flooring has been installed on the second and third floors of that building because it is a three-story building. And the elevator shaft will help with all of that, the mobility at DuBois. They're actually putting a road in between Lincoln and Illinois. It's going to be one way going, help me out, east, so that, so that the students, the people can slide into the parking lot, and they'll be done that way. So we're really excited about that because it'll help with some parking nightmares that DuBois has always had since the beginning of time, because that's where we're going to hurt. All right, this is Fairview. They've actually got their books on the shelves, so that's even more exciting. You can see the carpet and the lighting. And then on the right, you see the asphalt company is preparing the back of the school to pour asphalt for the playground area. They are excited about this because last year, they were left with just a very small slab for if it had rain to play outside, they really could only have like one or two classes out there. So now it's going to be all leveled off, and we're pretty excited. Sandberg, this is the view looking out of the old main entrance into the new reception area. So that used to be in the hallway there, and now they're looking into their new space. And on the right, this is the east looking back from one of the kindergarten classrooms that is being enlarged. And these classroom, three classrooms will become two large kindergarten classrooms. Kindergarten was always a tight space. They need a lot of stuff. And so now three rooms are becoming two rooms because they added the addition down on the other end. With bathrooms inside those kindergarten rooms. That makes it easy. Franklin Middle School, looking like a very, I mean, obviously landscaping is up next, but the crews have been out cutting out that West Drive, and they're going to pour a new driveway there, a new road, basically that goes back around the building to some parking and areas. The buses actually utilize that road a lot. They go up and they pull in and then come back out. So it's getting there. So Mr. Schaver, with the landscaping that comes with our package, so we will be going through and caring for the weeds and planting and creating the ground.
Grated and seeded is what we get. Any bushes and that kind of thing will be counteracted by us. But the base bits are just to grade and seed.
And take down all the monster weeds that are growing. No, it is not. But that, we're, you know, making sure that we keep up with the weeds as the school starts. Grant Middle School, next door, behind back, look at that picture on the right. It's just exciting. On the left, the brick masons have finished up, the east part of the outdoor dining area, and all the windows and doors have been installed. And on the right is the view looking out onto the playground in their new, you know, added space. And once again, having been a Grant general growing up, that cafeteria was a little dark and really, really small, and this is, this is pretty open and brings in a lot of natural light. So well-designed with those even upper windows on there, that's a real nice design. Jefferson Middle School, this is the tile work that is almost complete in one of the new restrooms that we've been doing this summer, which is why we did not house a summer school there because we took all the restrooms offline. And on the right, the brick masons have completed the radial stairwell at the end of the building, and the crews will be installing those windows this week, and that will allow a lot of work in that hallway to get underway.
Got a quick question.
Sure.
So the cafeterias were all very similar at the middle schools?
Yes.
But now that they're all being rebuilt, are they sticking with a similar kind of floor plan, or are they deviating a little bit?
The floor plan is based on whatever their floor plan looked like, but they all have the same type of addition where they have extra seating inside the cafeteria and then an area that can be, I don't know what the right word is, a movable wall that can make it into another space, and then they all have outdoor eating areas.
I'll first go.
Yep. So yeah, so yes, but look a little bit different just because of different shapes.
I'll be having lunch on the lanai.
The other ones a little more square, and yeah, so, yep. So this is Washington. On the left is the new elevator that's in. There's actually stuff in the elevator there. So on the right, this is the new, looking out of the original second floor into the new addition. And notice the detail in the ceiling and the tile work there at Washington. And Washington and Jefferson are by the same architect team, so you can expect both of them to look very, very similar. And then Lampier, just the evolution of everything that we're working on. On the left, we're prepping the foundation for the two new biology classrooms. On the right, they're in full demo mode inside the oldest part of the building. This is where the assistant principals were last school year, and this will be demoed and become two new classrooms in that hallway. So if you remember, those were kind of right off the commons, right off the cafeteria area where they were.
I've spent a lot of time at the Lucky Horseshoes this summer, and I think every time I go out there, it's like Lampier is completely different.
Leveled.
Yeah. You should see the football field.
So save the best for last, but these are the seats that are now in the southeast auditorium. The crew is installing the desktops on about 100 seats. So we did that randomly because when you take the ACT, there's all kinds of rules about how many feet you can be next to somebody or have somebody behind you. So those desk chairs will just be scattered in the right, in a way that makes sense and a pattern throughout the auditorium, but also they went with the three-seat colors to kind of bring the school spirit into play. Another view from the seats are on the right, from up on the, on the stage, kind of looking out. And then that kind of white flooring is actually paper, and that will be torn up, and there's going to be carpet, and then treated concrete that's really pretty underneath the chairs. Just to mix it up a little bit. It's kind of a light blue. It's kind of gray.
That was Mr. Wend's idea.
Yeah, it just mixes it.
The gray.
Oh my, is there a pattern in those chair colors, or like, did I miss?
No.
No.
We'll do something. We'll do it, we'll figure it out. Anyway, it's all good. It's nothing. And then also, the Memorial Field, the crew is conducting what they call a proof roll in Memorial Field as they prepare for all the drainage, but everything is torn out, and now they're preparing to build the surface. We do want everybody to know that the football schedule has come out, and I gave that to you in there. We are not going to be able to have football home games at the field unless some large miracles happen with the distribution chain in America. But it is all about the fuse box for all the lighting and electrical pieces is on, what, 50-week back order? And so we're not going to get that in by the football season. I mean, we ordered it the first time, minute we bid, that was ordered, so that's been almost three months ago now, but 50 weeks, need a little bit more time. So.
Electrical switch here.
Right, we will, right. We will continue to, you know, do everything else. The buildings are already, I think the foundation's being poured for the buildings, and all of those are going up. So, you know, all the fun things that you get to deal with right now with distribution. So we're thankful to have Spartan Field, and it's looking great because I was out there last Saturday. We're going to go out there and make sure it's all spruced up and ready for the season, but we will run, you know, the homecoming games there. Like you said, you mentioned senior night. I don't know if we've got all the information about that too, of when the different homecomings will be, but yeah.
So it'll be, it'll be in blue and gold, and then when there's a Lampier game, you're going to run the orange and black down the.
We're not sure yet, but we're going to, we're going to figure out all the little details. We are going to get some District 186 signage out there a little bit. And the main building, we're going to get out and spruce it up a little bit. There's just some things that we can do.
Will each of the, like, schools be able to hang up, like, their senior banners?
Yeah, we can figure all those things out.
Yes, we actually are working on that now regarding fence lines. These could hang those. Deal with that, so either you haul them at once and then stay, or you get them up, and now you will figure that out, but it's already, we already started this thing.
Great.
I guess the only thing that's good about it is my car will go to one place, but it'll just go there on Friday and Saturday rather than going out there and figuring out which one do I go to tonight for, so it's all good.
Superintendent, I have a quick question, and you might not be able to answer this right today, but school supplies, I'm hearing folks asking questions about, you know, last year, I know that there was a school supply distribution divided district. Of course, we have a lot of community school supply drives that happen in our community. Do you have any information regarding that?
We, for all of the elementary schools, we did get school supplies this year.
Okay.
And it'll be delivered in a grade-appropriate box, so the right things went in. Actually, I had Tracy Gage kind of help me go around all the principals and come to consensus with, you know, what we put on that box. And then our communications team ordered those, and that is being paid for through the ESSER funding, just to help families. As supply drives happen and we get extra supplies in, we'll be routing those to the schools that are in need, middle schools and high schools as well.
Thank you.
They have started to arrive. We always get stuff, yeah. The boxes for the elementary schools have, and then we'll get those out to the schools, and they'll have a distribution plan.
Okay, so people should pay attention to their, go to the website.
Go to the website, we'll have all of it up there.
And for the elementary schools, and they'll get information.
We'll get some communication out there about that.
Thank you.
Superintendent.
Yes.
Please, the Board probably have done this 150 times this year, but I'd like to thank the citizens of Sacramento County again for supporting this tax increase. I think what you've seen on the screen tonight is indicative of what we have done, what's capable of being done. I ran into a gentleman this weekend at the dinner that has no connection to Lampier, did not go there, but he is so excited about the prospects of that building and what that's going to do for the North Side and actually for the city of Springfield. So again, I would like to thank everybody for supporting this, because it's really going to make a difference.
I second that.
Yeah, and, you know, we were talking about this. There was another colleague of mine that we have very spirited exchanges sometimes, and he was, he just put me on the spot and said, "Tell me when a tax has ever worked out the way it was supposed to." And I said, "Well, the sales tax." I said, "This has actually worked out beautifully because you're not feeling it out of your pocketbook and look at everything that's able to happen throughout the history that never would have happened." So it's just, it's really working just as good as it was described, and it's really a pleasant surprise to see.
Thank you.
I also, real quickly, about the 5K run, I wanted to give a shout out to Ms. Austin for your work to help pull that together. But also, since I know we've got Paul Charter here on our agenda, I thought it was important to say that one of their teachers, Britt Holsmacher, actually had the best showing for 186, so I wanted to give a shout out to her.
And Mr. Wend, were you in the yellow safety jacket? Was that the?
No. Spartan visor.
Okay, okay.
No yellow safety jacket.
It was really, really hot in the morning. It was a humid day, so we were all dying. It was fine.
All right, so are we good?
We're good.
All right, so we're going to move on to 7.1, Old Business. Do any members have any old business for discussion? All right, we're going to move it to 7.2, the Shields Legacy Park Sports Complex, and we're going to open that up for discussion.
Go, Mr. Ringer.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'll just say that we had, it's about four or five board meetings ago now, we had Steve Lucre, who's the developer, come, and we really haven't moved past anything. He gave us an LOI. I do have Rob Cross in the crowd tonight, too. He's had several conversations with Mr. Lucre, and then I also met with Tony and Mica and Mr. Lucre and his partners to kind of go through the letter of intent that they provided us. I think it's much more palatable now that we've, you know, taken and put in some things in, that we're in the best interest of the district, but there's some fill-in-the-blanks that I don't want to do without your input. And so I'd like to hear your input about the financial components. We do feel like, as a system, that we have worked with Mr. Lucre for a long time now because he started asking a lot of questions before he actually put all of it together. One of them being, how much could District 186 actually use this? You know, what, and explaining, also asking, you know, what we, what we didn't, what we need in our district and for the sports that we currently have. You know, what can we do in the future, you know, with different sports that could be, could start a lot of people in Chicagoland, up lacrosse and things like that, where we have no, you know, lacrosse fields here in town or schools. So all of those things are things that were apart. So I thought for a minute before we just jump in, if, Mr. Wend, could you talk about how you came up with the number of hours you think we would need and that we would use? And then I know you also told Mr. Lucre a couple times that we needed more time on certain days and how that would work out.
Right, so really, we started by looking at the deficiencies we have for fields for middle schools and high schools. That's where this began. So looking at this, middle schools, we're looking at our baseball, softball program, and then gym space, it would be our girls' basketball, boys' basketball, and volleyball that cross, they cross over at multiple points during the year, and it takes gym space up. It's hard to get kids into the gym. And so in looking at that, I went back to the number of days these sports are in session and the number of overlap days that are possible in there. And just kind of calculated a two-hour practice or a two-hour game at the middle school and kind of figured out where this may fall in terms of using space out at the legacy complex. And then at the high school, it was very similar. We know that with our baseball and softball programs, Lampier has a facility for softball that they continue to upgrade. We have Rob and Robert Stadium, where both Springfield and Lampier play baseball. And then we have the Eisenhower Complex for baseball and softball where Southeast play. But those are all natural grass and surfaces. As soon as we get rain and those aren't cared for, those games are rained out. And so we started to look at how many days we might have rain during the season and tried to place some what-if, and how many days will we rain out, and what could we do if it was a turf surface as opposed to a natural grass surface? With soccer, soccer was a little bit the same way. We play.
We've got a great grass.
We've got a great grass field out Lee Field, phenomenal field. But when we get a lot of rain, we do get washed out of Lee every once in a while because we don't want to tear the field apart. And so, how could, how could a turf surface work into that scenario with the fact that Memorial is going to be a turf surface? And we might be able to use that for soccer, for girls' season especially, as we move forward. And then looking at big picture for the other sports at the high school, it was boys' and girls' basketball and the crossover with multiple teams being in the gym at one time. And having one main gym at Southeast where the overlap of teams comes into play, trying to get kids home so that they're not home at ten o'clock at night. They get home earlier because they can split up, you can send some kids over to practice at Legacy and use the facility for a couple hours of practice there for, for a team, whereas the other team stays at the school. And this also plays into Lanfear, I think in the coming years when we have construction going on, if they would get that facility built out at Legacy, we'd be able to get kids out there and split practice time. And even after the facility's built at Lanfear and we start at Springfield High with construction, we will need that, the flexibility of sending some teams to places. So we get kids home as opposed to having them out at practice late in the evening and then having to get up for school or getting up for practice real early in the morning and, and then going to school thereafter, so.
And how do we, the, the times that we're allowed to use, what, what was his comment about that?
So, after school, during the weekdays, so Monday through, Monday through Thursday in particular, those are going to be very light days for this complex. And so, we would be very open to having people out or having teams out there to utilize that facility Monday through Thursday about any time we need it. And then what we agreed upon was, as long as there was advanced notice, so we camp home at one in the afternoon and tell them that we need to use the field at five o'clock that day. So if we had some advanced notice, they would really work with the district in order to have time on those fields and really keep us there as long as we need it. And then use that two thousand hours of time to accommodate the time to make the field.
But we would not be charged for any hour over anything that we use?
That is how I understand it.
And then middle school baseball, you didn't really mention that, softball.
Middle school baseball and softball, again, when we talk about those facilities, the fields, the park district maintains those fields for us. They do a, they do what they can do to maintain fields, they have fields all over the place right now and it's hard for them to maintain and keep them. And again, same kind of scenario we have with the high schools, as soon as we get rain, those games are rained out. Being that middle school baseball and softball start in August and run until September, we get some rain early on and they get washed out pretty quick and the season's over with. It's a very short season compared to high school baseball and softball. So, we're trying to, we think about from the standpoint of doing physical practice in that for all schools, not just specifically, we can get all the teams out there to practice that facility and then play games. Can, or if the field, if not, use that facility out there as well as...
Thanks for that background, that might be helpful about the work you've done to figure out the need.
So what was proposed to us for the hours of two thirty to five thirty? They're, be able to, like Monday through Thursday?
Monday through Thursday are, are given, those are, those are ideal. And then Fridays can be negotiated depending on what that is, you can get a single field, that's more after, and if we needed, you know, multiple fields on Friday. Because Friday, Saturday, Sunday is when they bring, that's when they're planning on bringing tournaments and things that are still out there.
But we did, but we did talk too about if they knew in advance that if we had some sectional meets that we wanted to have or regional, you know, meets and that we could, we could do that.
Plan it ahead.
So here's my thoughts, so what we've been given, what's been proposed to us is that we have baked property taxes for twenty years on this. With the idea that it's going to spur other development in the area and we're going to be collecting sales tax. And yes, we do need the sales tax money because that's what we are building our new facilities and whatnot with. But we pay our day to day expenses with our property taxes. I'm very uncomfortable doing a twenty year abatement on the property taxes. I have no idea how much money we're talking with, because we have to be talking several million dollars of available spendable money, salaries and whatnot. I'm very uncomfortable with that aspect of this.
So, so let me know if I'm saying something that's surprised anybody, but I thought when we had talked about potential lost revenue, it was somewhere in the ballpark of three hundred thousand a year. Does that ring a bell to anybody?
Well, there's no, the only thing about that, there's, there's great potential for it to be somewhere between two fifty and three hundred thousand on those, on those parcels. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Cross, eventually when they're built, right now, we aren't getting anywhere near that. I think we get like, I think we talked two thousand eight hundred and thirty-six out of the forty-five hundred dollar money that we get from the current property with no, nothing on it. So, and that's not including Shields, this is, and I will say just for the good of the cause that this is drawn around the fields only and where the, where the dome will be. It does not incorporate, a TIF district always incorporates other areas to bring money into the TIF, this is not that at all. It would just be an abatement of the land where the fields will be built, is that the way you understood it, Mr. Osborne?
But, but that's been the question, is, you know, trying to estimate the value of this thing as it gets fully developed and all the revenue that comes in. And it seems like that's been a number that, that got tossed around and, and I'm, I'm with Mr. Ringer, you know, we're all just trying to take a guess at how much the lost revenue is going to be. The caveat being, we're not really getting anything right now. But, then again, as he indicated, you know, our bread and butter is property taxes. And you know, this one project may not, you know, be a, a major loss of revenue to us, but when you start to look at some of the other things, you know, we've got forty acres over off the Cokie Mill and we're losing revenue on that not being developed. We're considering a site over on Eleventh Street for a school and that could be another thirty-five acres or so that has lost commercial development. And it all starts to add up to some serious money each year, which is why I think we're all kind of, we've got some pause about this. I, I just want to say, I, I understand there's been a major investment out there and we all want to see the growth. We all want to see this thing take off and flourish and it's going to take the commitment from 186. But the twenty years to me is, is just too much with the unknown. So if there are some checkpoints that can be put in, maybe at a five year mark, that would make me feel way more comfortable, comfortable about the entire thing.
Have, have there actually been conversations about ridiculous enough of years, enough of commitment?
Yes, because I heard that loud and clear from all of you, that the twenty years was a, so Mr. Cross, I think even had some conversations today regarding the twenty year and that we probably would not put that into our... We're, we're, we're going to issue them a letter of intent that has our, whatever all of you feel comfortable with, and then it'll be a negotiation from that point forward.
Rob, if you'll allow me just a second, I think, I think that, you know, that we have, there's been some discussion amongst the board with regards to this, you know, I mean, Mr. Ringer, Mr. Miller bring up a lot of good points and I echoed, I, I think I, I kind of started some of them. And, you know, we've, we've had some discussion with our consul, he's put together a letter of intent for us, that there are some, some things that we need to continue to discuss. You know, I think, I think all of us think that there's going to be a value somewhere down the road, but we just need to figure out, you know, what is going to be best for the district. And obviously, you know, starting out with a twenty year commitment, you know, that has, you know, can have advantages, you know, both pro and con. So, you know, we want to be very careful as we go forward and I think that, you know, there has been some dialogue with regards to, you know, some possibilities of, you know, looking at the letter of intent and coming up with, with some alternatives. Mr. Cross?
Yes, everything, Miller, Mr. Ringer, Mr. Wood, Mr. Morris, I just said, you're right on me. We don't know what the answer's going to be. As Mr. Wind stated, we're going to have district students who are going to get...
Can you use this mic up here by, by the podium so that everybody can hear you, thank you.
Mr. Cross loves a microphone.
He loves a camera too.
All these are good points, yeah.
Is it on?
It's not on.
Rob Cross is our, our district attorney.
And tax.
And tax support, yes.
And tax support.
So, I mean, everything you're thinking, these are the right things to be thinking and we don't, Mr. Miller was right, we, we don't know what in twenty years that, that the taxes are going to be, we don't know. We know that it will draw other businesses from which we will, you know, the district will get property taxes. We know there'll be a benefit to district students immediately as these, as these different complexes start to be built. But I think, well, I think at this point, what the seven of you need to do is come up with a counter, whatever, whatever the counter offer you feel comfortable with, this incremental approach is a great idea, that's a great idea. Then we can, we can measure what the growth has been, what the taxes have been, what we're paying as a preferred rate, that, that's, that's a great idea.
I, I just think we should not just automatically dismiss it because we don't like the term to the contract, that we can negotiate. Because I think it has the potential for it to be possibly an economic boom to us from what's going to end up out there property wise.
Agreed.
The twenty year abatement, just to, for my own clarification, is for the sports complex itself. Anything that's built up around it would not be part of that conversation. So, I do like the idea of putting checkpoints in along the way to, you know, in a, a five year plan of here we are and, you know, whether that, whether that data is looking at, you know, I don't know what it's looking at actually. It's looking at money that's coming, you know, in...
I think it's to his point of what, what revenue is being...
What the revenue is, yeah.
What is the idea of that property now?
Yeah.
Right.
Twenty years is a long time.
And, and from what I, what my understanding is, you won't know what the assessed value is until the project is completely completed.
Right.
So, you know, I mean, and, and I, I, I want to say that they were probably looking at maybe three to five years before the dome was built, Mr. Wind, is that? I know, I know the, the, the fields will be built, constructed first and then the, the dome would be the last thing, right? Or, or is that going to be the first thing?
They're, they're phasing that in and so the fields are first, the dome, I think, might have been in phase two that they were looking at. And then, but I think everything was kind of, they were, they were trying to figure out where, what phase everything was going to fall and it was all set and done.
Does the dome include the inside basketball courts?
The dome would have the inside basketball courts, yes.
That would be out for a while and...
Yes, that would, that would not be, that would not be inside.
So football, softball and baseball would be at first.
Soccer, baseball, softball would all, then it, right from, right from the beginning.
Okay.
There is definitely a need for that, I will say.
Well, I don't think there's any doubt that the district doesn't see a need or, you know, a potential need going forward. And, you know, obviously, you know, we, we've got some information that we've received from, you know, Rob Cross with regards to, you know, moving forward. So, you know, I think we're going to get together in a relatively short order and, you know, make a counter proposal and I'm sure Mr. Cross is going to present that to him for us.
And, and I also think it's worth saying publicly something that Ms. Laowolfe was kind of insinuating. This is an extremely unique situation with 186 where we can bring a benefit to the students, to the families of 186 and this isn't going to be setting a precedent for any other developments. You know, you're not just going to have like a McDonald's and it's going to be the 186 McDonald's, we want to bait our property taxes. We're, we're not going down that road, this is just an extremely unique situation.
I talked about this with Mr. Osborne as well, in agreement with that statement. It's not easy for me to want to, you know, but we, we've played ball with some TIF districts and some things like that and we want to see the betterment of our community. And this unique instance too, the way it can be defied a little differently is we are going to get something back in return in terms of preferential field time signage that talks about District 186 being a partner in this project. Also, we won't pay for any of those hours if we don't use them. So, the amount of rent or whatever on those fields is only if we use them. And the rack rate, which is what the, a turn that they use, which is the, the standard rate for renting them is fifty percent higher than it will be for District 186. So, we had talked about that with them at the get go, that full rate on top of us giving your property taxes is going to fly, so...
I think those are good checkpoints to like evaluate that and see...
To see where we are, how many hours are we using and what's the cost.
Do we really, you know, are we having trouble scheduling on a Friday that we thought we would, could easily do even if we, you know, made the request on a Monday? You know, those kinds of things that I think we would need to start, make sure we're keeping track of.
And, and speaking about precedent, the last two TIF districts that we signed a letter of support for, Madison Park Place and Enos, we also negotiated about a twenty percent return from, from the revenues generated, so...
But we know, but TIF districts and abatement are two different things.
Right, but just for the example that we're, we're not interested in just a hundred percent.
Right.
You know, release the funds.
Yeah.
Well, and then the other, you know, I think one of the other things, I mean, you know, obviously 186 sees a value not only to, to our district, but also to our community.
Sure.
And, you know, this is, you know, this is a negotiation and, you know, we're going to continue to negotiate. And I think that, you know, in the end, everything will turn out amicably.
I did have a spirited conversation with somebody who was very, and, and wants this, to see this come to fruition because they drive to St. Louis every single weekend for soccer. And the toll that that takes on their, on their family financially for a child who's very talented in that way and may be able to get a scholarship and just being able to think about having some of those things for baseball, for, you know, baseball tournaments are no joke. You have to go for the whole weekend and they're usually Friday, Saturday and Sunday. And it's a lot to have that right here and people be able to go home and rest in their own homes and have grandparents and everything that's here go and see the sports for our community is something that is pretty exciting as well. So it's just kind of a, a unique thing and it's, it's taken a lot of time, you know, away from what I normally do, of course. But when you think about how much it could better our community, you know, it's worth us taking the time to understand what kind of information you'd like to see in that, in that LOI that Mr. Cross will help draft and get in, get the negotiation started.
I appreciate everyone's input.
So I'm hearing less than twenty years and I'm hearing any other pieces?
Checkpoints.
Checkpoints along the way, like Mr. Miller suggested, anybody else have anything else? We want to make sure the hours are aligned to the things that, that Mr. Wind said, but I've been pretty upfront about our needs and the, the use. If we don't get out till three thirty, you know, a four thirty stop time is not okay, right?
No, that's, yeah, that's not going to be a benefit.
Well, like high school baseball, if they play there, they warm up for an hour plus before the game, the games start at four thirty.
You can't predict their length.
And then the games might last two or three hours.
Is the two thirty start time feasible when, like Lanfear doesn't even get out of school till two seventeen? So, should the start time be three?
Three seventeen, they'll adjust that.
Three seventeen, yeah.
They'll just have to, it can't just be a standard time, it'll have to go with the flow and the different sports.
You need to look at the middle schools, the middle schools will be able to start Franklin's less than a mile, a mile and a half down the road. They maybe will start Washington, they've got them all the way across town, Jefferson, so I think you have to figure all those things in. When you start the clock on practice, if you get there at three, you're there at the five, if you get there at three thirty, you're there at five thirty. We need to figure out how to start the clock and then do the science and remember that I've learned that Legacy will be able to work with us most times, especially on those non-prime time days.
And I guess additionally, we do already have a signed letter of, of agreement from a local organization that's going to build if the fields are built. And it, we, we could do a, we did a like, just kind of like you did a comparable on that building that's here in town and another location that's the same size and structured. And the portion that District 186 would receive would be on the low end, about twelve thousand dollars in property taxes. And right now, as it sits, we're getting two thousand eight hundred and something off the four thousand five hundred that are generated from that field. And so, you know, we're, we already know of one that we'll get and there'll be many others hopefully that will go up and down the MacArthur and Boulevard. And I think it's going to really affect Dirkson Parkway and all the hotels and hopefully see more development out that way because you get on that, get on that highway and you're right there. So, I think there'll be some other growth around town as well.
I think we're all rooting for its success, but then again, that's just going to make a bigger commitment for us.
Absolutely, well, is there any other further discussion? Superintendent, Mr. Wind, Mr. Cross, thank you. All right, so we're going to move on to seven point two. Is there any new business that board members would like to bring before?
Seven point three, because two is a dumb numbers thing. Right, it does say seven point two twice, right, no big deal.
I, I do have...
Okay, seven, seven point three, new business.
I do have some new business. My family's enjoyed being out and about this summer and I've been talking with quite a few just residents in 186, probably half a dozen of them on the topic of school consolidation, which we haven't talked about in a while. This is the elementary schools and the Eleventh Street site that has kind of been tapped as one of the prime locations. My question, the board was given an environmental study back in May and is it possible to make that study available on our website for anybody to view?
Mr. Cross just said, yes, we could, we'll, we'll look into that if you're going to...
Okay, it's just easier for people to read than for me. It's just easier for people to read than for me to describe the stuff that we've received. Thank you.
All right, any other new business? All right, seeing no new business, we're gonna move on to eight point one, public comment. The Board of Education, I encourage public comment and public participation in board meetings. However, it is inappropriate for any person to name a student or individual employee, including designated employee, by job title rather than name in open session. If any public commenters want to address issues related to an individual student or one District 186 employee, that commenter is invited to contact the board office or a member of the cabinet prior to public comment. It is not the intention of the board to discourage public comment in any way. Rather, it is the intention of the board to address issues regarding individual students and employees in an appropriate manner. We thank you for respecting the privacy of our students and employees by following this rule. District 186 streams board meetings on YouTube. All content posted there is subject to YouTube's content guidelines. Springfield Public Schools District 186 continues to encourage public comment statements. Statements made by speakers during the public comment do not represent the views of, or opinions of the Board of Education or Springfield Public School District 186.
Do we have any questions?
No.
Well, we have one, uh, we have one person who would like to address the board, Nancy Emerson.
Ms. Emerson, you'll have three minutes. I'll display a clock up here, and it'll count the time down for you.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Nancy Emerson. I am a mom to a rising second grade daughter that was recently diagnosed with dyslexia. I'm here to share my story and because I'd like the district to make changes in how it services its dyslexic students. Dyslexia is common, up to twenty percent of students have it. It's a language-based learning disability, but focusing on it as just a deficit is problematic because dyslexics tend to be better at abstract and spatial reasoning. They tend, tend to be more intuitive and better at predicting outcomes. Children with dyslexia are not dumb, though they often feel that way. They have normal or above-average IQs. My daughter has the puzzle, um, has the puzzle-solving ability of sophomore in high school. She's very, very smart, and so her map scores in reading are not the lowest of the low. And she's only a few levels below grade level in her reading assessment. But I saw things at home that concerned me, so I took her outside of the district for a diagnosis. My, through interactions and conversations with the elementary school staff, it kinda leads me to believe that they are not very knowledgeable on dyslexia, how common it is, what the signs are, how to intervene or identify it. And they're not trained on what the proven approaches are to help students with dyslexia. I think this is related to the fact that the district's not implementing a structured literacy curriculum. So, not only is my daughter not receiving instruction through a curriculum that works for her dyslexic brain, but her teachers don't really have a deep understanding of dyslexia either. I'm attempting to navigate the IEP process. My thought is that if she's not being taught in a way that works for her brain, then I need to make sure she's working with literacy coach. But it hasn't been simple. I have a diagnosis from a trained psychologist who recommends she receive an Orton-Gillingham-based approach to reading, but no one in the school can provide it. Not only can it not be provided, but the IEP team didn't think her dyslexia was affecting her education enough to have an official IEP assessment. And I didn't push back too hard because staff isn't trained on the Orton-Gillingham training. So, I went outside the district to a private dyslexia tutor where the going rate is fifty dollars an hour, and I've spent a grand since March. It is unfair to take a wait-and-see approach with dyslexic students. Dyslexia is so well researched, and I know that without proper instruction, she could hit high school reading at a fifth grade level. It's not fair to wait until her scores are just in the tank before there's an intervention. School is such a major source of stress for us, and we're only going in the second grade. Students with dyslexia deserve instruction and intervention using proven methods to address their dyslexia and close the gap between where they are and where they should be. And taking a dyslexia-friendly approach to reading and spelling will benefit all students. So, I'm asking that the elementary reading and writing curriculum change and that elementary teachers and literacy coaches be trained in dyslexia approaches. Thank you.
No, thank you.
All right, well, thank you. We appreciate that, and we're going to move on to nine point one. I believe we have a presentation from Ball Charter School. Superintendent?
I'm just gonna turn it over to Principal Williams. She's got a presentation, and let her get that up on the screen. I do wanna thank our speaker this evening. Thank you for coming in and having the bravery to do that. We really appreciate it.
Good evening to everyone. My name is Tiffany Williams. I began my teaching career in District 186, and I've had the honor to be an administrator at Springfield Ball Charter School for six years. This is a resting month for my teachers, although several of my staff members are putting in work. So, I am here tonight really to represent the team. And as I start my presentation, I'd like to just share with the board and guests this evening are four focus areas at Ball Charter, which are literacy, literacy, multi-age, and professional development. As stated, our mission really fosters learning through the development of high-quality research-based academic programs with special attention to the learning needs of individual children and also the involvement of parents in their children's education. Now, next we take a look at the work that our teachers are doing. And the teachers at Ball Charter are amazing. There is a, a level of autonomy in their classrooms that allows them to initiate their own research. And we have a longer school day to give some additional time to plan and to, to put that research into their instructional strategies. So, just taking a look at some of our professional learning communities that I really wanted to highlight. Our multi-age vision team, vision teams are developed with different topic areas. But when COVID hit, not only did we need to reduce the number of vision teams, but we really needed to focus. And so, we, we went to our focus area to look at multi-age. Our multi-age vision team is a group of teachers that discusses the research and foundational theories that support multi-age education. When people ask what the benefits of multi-age have been in the past, they've often referred to mentorship and differentiation, but really a lot about just having olders and youngers in the classroom and the social benefits of that. And there are many, but if we pay attention to our mission, we really want those decisions to be research-based and not just the opinion of a teacher saying that kids get along better when they're all mixed up. So, we've talked a lot about constructivism and children being able to use their personal experiences and look in their own world for, to apply their learning. And so, we're, we've really been studying the pedagogy of how students learn as opposed to the pedagogy of how teachers teach. This study has helped us understand our why, meaning our, our student-centered approach. And I, I celebrate all of the teachers who have taken that professional development to heart. And we have modified our master schedule so that this year, our multi-age model will reflect a three-year loop at the middle school level. And through data, we've been able to really identify students who were impacted the greatest by remote learning at an early grade. And we are adapting for those students rather than asking them to adapt to how we teach. In addition to that multi-age vision team, my previous assistant principal, Mr. Hood, if you can go back to that, just at the bottom there, led our math vision team as we sought to improve our math curriculum. He, he starts school tomorrow as the principal of Graham Elementary School. So, I, I have to give him a shout-out though for the work that he's done facilitating meetings and professional development for our math pilot. After one year, we really were not worried about deadlines. We're worried about success, and so we're gonna extend our search. And we're gonna look at two different curriculums this year, the one that we looked at last year in addition to a new one, and really make a decision again that's best for kids. We are looking at items like technology integration, how students are assessed, pre- and post-testing, and how often students are assessed so that they really have time to learn the material. And then, especially in our most recent professional development with District 186, the school improvement planning days this summer, our instructional leadership team has looked at the effects or the impact of student engagement. And so, that is going to be our school improvement plan focus for this year. And we appreciate the consultants who have supported our work with data at Ball Charter School and our ability to partner and participate in those professional developments. We'll take that piece, and three times a year, our teacher teams sit down together. We put substitutes in the classroom, and they collaborate and look at school-wide data, which now we have multiple points, including our map assessment, our IR assessments, and our classroom-level projects. So, the data days will help us make that final decision. Moving on, we also have a behavior team. At Ball Charter, we have a behavior interventionist to facilitate a group of teachers who ensure that our school poli, policies and our handbook are equitable for all, policies that are fair. That shared decision-making process not only includes the input and feedback from every single team in the school, which has representative members, but also from our students. And this summer, when we sat down, we had a list from our student council of items that we should review, and we have made changes based off of student voice. That behavior team meets monthly. Each month on Wednesday, they talk about student concerns and handbook concerns. And then on Fridays, they look at our discipline data and make sure that every single student who is demonstrating a cry for help through some of their actions and behavior, that we are meeting the needs and providing intervention based off of that. The last PLC that I wanted to talk about today is our access team. Our access team supplies, provides student support. Teachers, again, bring six to eight weeks of data to that group. I do really wanna recognize at this time Julie Jurgens, who retired, but she's been our caseworker. And in the past, they've been more active in even supporting our access team. But we are starting to become much more independent, and that's due, again, to the professional development, the training, and being able to identify effective interventions for our students. We invite parents to come in and be part of that conversation. It could lead to classroom support. It may lead to IEP testing. It may lead to a 504 plan. But we've celebrated a lot of success without having even to take some of those steps. And those access team meetings are scheduled regularly and can also be requested by parents. So, those are the ways that our teachers are really doing the work at Ball Charter School. I would like to highlight some of the items that our students are doing. Our Junior Beta Club just returned from Nationals in Nashville. We, those national conventions, if you've never been, you'd be blown away. They're kind of like mini senate hearings. There's a lot of kids about half my size wearing suits and ties, lots of lapel pins and medals. But they actually run for office at the state and at the national level. And so, students sit through some very long meetings, listening to speeches. Students are required to put together live commercials, and so their peers come and assist. And then there's all kinds of talent opportunities. So, everything from academic math and science tests to living literature to song fest. And we're just so excited. And our Junior Beta Club participants are featured on the new website as one of our pictures on our homepage. Throughout the year, our students have received scholastic awards in both art and language arts. We actually have a, an eighth-grade student this year who is completing a novel. And her mother's a teacher in District 186, and we're excited that she has found a way to express herself and demonstrate her talent. But we're proud of Mr. Lynn and Ms. Mathenya for those awards. Mrs. Tan leads our student council, who holds in-house elections. Again, promoting what skills and talents they can bring to the school. And it gives me an opportunity to hear what our students want. They actually plan several events throughout the year, not only for celebrations, but for fundraising for chosen organizations. Mentoring, we are a K through H school, and so we have the unique opportunity to have our middle-level students visit and work with K through five students during the school day. Again, it's an important aspect of our multi-age classrooms, but also an important aspect of our K through eight building overall. Our athletic co-op with Lincoln Magnet School is very special. Ball Charter is the home gym for many of our teams, but our coaches include staff from both Ball Charter and Lincoln Magnet School. Principal Hyden and I, as well as our athletic directors, have enjoyed a very successful opportunity to see our kids advance through athletics. And even though they play at Ball Charter, we will often visit Lincoln Magnet for a parade and other opportunities for recognition. Very quickly, the Future Presidents of America is a program that takes place in partnership with our Abraham Presidential Library and Museum. Ball Charter has been a proud supporter of that program since it began. It involves a summer camp where students learn aspects about self-promotion, politics, business planning. And it has raised the confidence level of many of our students. We're a small school, and it just provides them an opportunity to collaborate with students around the district and around this region. And I definitely wanna give a shout-out to the Presidential Library and Museum, one of our, our community partners. Junior Glee Club is my baby. I, I've been a music teacher in District 186 from two thousand to two thousand sixteen, and Ball Charter's given me the rare opportunity to continue to still keep my toe in teaching. But this year, we had sixty Glee Club members participate, and they are, yes, we're a school of three hundred and ninety-six. And so, we have seen a boost in the fine arts. In fact, we've had several students in community theater that are highlighted on our website as well. But we're just happy to make sure that we're able to offer all students education. We don't feel like, or, music education, it's not a privilege. It should be something that's available to everybody. Our school talent show was a super hit, and then our PTO is just amazing. And they hosted our second kids prom, which is an opportunity for kids to dress up in formals and bring an adult and share an evening of music in a safe environment. But our PTO is wonderful, and that just highlights one of their planned activities. And then, as I wrap up, there's just some pictures of our beautiful campus. We did have a Disney theme this year. Mary Poppins visited the students as they arrived. Here you see Ms. Rosie, who's been at Ball Charter since my kids were there, probably about twenty, twenty years, and our other grandma that are new supervisors. You see some of the curriculum and some celebrations on the wall. Thank you. And then our next slide, we see our award-winning Lincoln Magnet Ball Charter cross-country team. Again, some parent and family engagement as they visit our campus for picnics. Student of the Month, a monthly opportunity to pick a character trait and have parent, teachers nominate students who demonstrate that. Over to the right, I was really excited to welcome some prospective administrators to our building so they could finish a project for their master's program. And they turned out to be students from the American College of Education, and that's where I got my master's. So, it was neat for them to visit the building. We hope that others will visit our building. You see some of the artwork there too, displayed at the bottom. Here shows a little bit of our school spirit. This was from our Decades Day, and you can see that our teachers also participate in that piece. And a little Run DMC action going on from my primary kiddos. And lastly, these sticky notes were actually part of one of our teacher appreciation activities and where teachers were earning points for different things throughout the week. And they earned points for sticky notes of encouragement that they gave to one another. And I just warn everybody, if you've got a good staff, don't do this because it will take you three days to walk around the building and add up all the sticky notes. But it just reflects how much they love and appreciate each other. And we actually, every teacher and person in the office left those sticky notes up for the remainder of the year. They were wonderful personal reminders of how much we appreciate each other. Beta Club, Community Theater, our partnership with Horace. Beta Club, Community Theater, our partnership with Horace Mann Educator of the Year, that's Ms. Kendra, our cafeteria worker. And she was one of our Horace Mann recipients for her work. She's wonderful. Some of our classroom display in Spanish, which we offer Spanish kindergarten through eighth grade. And in closing, I, my greatest achievement that I hope to leave my staff with is, in this day and age, is to reduce stress. And I, even through work in other organizations I do here in the city, teachers' greatest request is for time. And so I'm very mindful of their time. And I believe that many hands make light work. Ball Charter gives me the opportunity to be an administrator who provides that. We are a smaller learning community. But in our school, if you walk through each day, you're going to see teachers, you're going to see classroom aides, kindergarten through third grade. You're going to see interventionists, reading coaches, math interventionists, behavior interventionists. You're going to see substitute teachers that are treated like family. New supervisors, our security, which is actually a new position, I really probably should have said, you know, like a peace officer, but Mr. Corey has a special relationship with kids. He started as a new supervisor. He actually played on the Lamphier High School basketball team. But he started as a new supervisor, and he's grown to be a full-time employee. We're happy to have him. But you're going to see administrators, custodians, student support staff that we've partnered with, with District 186. You're going to see parent guardian volunteers. You're going to see families and siblings who get to stay together longer at Ball Charter. And even our foster grandparents, who were, the United Ways no longer funding that. We hope that they will bring that back because all of these people, including our board of directors and our athletic coaches, make the work lighter at Ball Charter. I think that's healthy for our teachers. I think it encourages our students. And I know that every single one of our 396 has an adult in the building that they know love and cares about them. So I think, I truly appreciate the partnership between Ball Charter and District 186. We believe in school choice, and we're happy to be an option for District 186 families. Thank you.
Good job.
I just wanted to take a second and point out one of those unique arrangements with the multi-H classes. Both of my daughters went through those classes and just flourished. They had a wonderful opportunity for the elders and the youngers to teach with each other. But also to plug Ms. Holesmacher, once again, this will be twice in the same meeting, that her and Ms. Willenborg who teach that class were Crystal Apple Award winners just last month. So just wanted to say that you're doing some great work over there.
Thank you.
Hi, Echo. You're doing a tremendous job. Ms. Williams was actually one of my teachers, my shop car teacher. So I'm happy that she brought that back to Ball Charter because she was a true inspiration when I was at high school. So thank you for bringing that spirit back to Ball Charter.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Great work and continued success. We're going to move to 10.1, the Business Report. Superintendent.
Ms. Charlesburg.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'd like to reiterate, I've had the opportunity to spend some time with Ms. Williams. Some of the things they're doing over there are very fantastic. Also like to highlight the sticking note recognition program. We have that instituted at the business office, and so that's always nice to see. And also reiterate that American College of Education, because it seems to be a great education source for us busy teachers and administrators online, to where I'm working on my superintendent's license. So American College of Education, you get another plug. President Mars, members of the Board of Education, I present to you the June 2022 Business Report for the July 18th, 2022 Board Meeting. For the month of June, the Education Fund and the Operations and Maintenance Funds Report is as follows. The monthly Education Fund revenues were $25.3 million, and Education Fund expenditures totaled $24.2 million. Revenues exceeding expenditures by $1.1 million for the month of June. The year-to-date Ed Fund revenues have exceeded the expenditures by $10.4 million, again referencing that CPRT position. The Operations and Maintenance Fund revenues for June 2022 were $4.2 million, and expenditures were $1.3 million. Revenues exceed expenditures by just under $2.9 million. The year-to-date O&amp;M Fund revenues have exceeded expenditures by $2.2 million. Moving on, for the Investment Balances Report, as of June 30th, the district had a combined cash balance of $89.8 million in the bank for all funds. For the operating funds only, the Education Fund, O&amp;M, Transportation and Work and Cash Funds, total cash in the bank was $58.1 million. Total investments were $110.4 million. Earned interest on all cash accounts for the month was just over $531,000. The interest rate on all cash accounts on June 30th was 0.50% or 50 basis points. The total balance of cash and investments for all funds as of June 30th, 2022 was $202 million. For operating funds only, the balance was $58.1. The district also shows county sales tax proceeds received during the month of June as $1,115,675 for the March collection period. Total collections thus far for FY '22 are $12.56 million, and total collections of just over $29.9 million. Superintendent Gil, President Mars, members of the Board, this concludes the Business Report for activities occurring during the period of June 1st through the 30th, 2022.
I have a question for you.
Certainly.
So when Governor Pritzker, like, froze or eliminated the grocery sales tax for, like, the next fiscal year, is that going to affect the sales tax revenue that we're bringing in?
It will be brief. I did have a calculation because I actually ran through that.
It's the answer, yes.
Yes.
I think it's only through the 31st of December, though.
Right, right. And I tried to do an estimate. We're not going to field as much, I'm trying to find it. We're not going to field as much. We've really secured quite a bit more in the food services. And they've extended some other programs, instituted some other things. So I think that full encompassing, we're still going to come out on the positive side, but there will be a slight impact.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Certainly. I'll find it and I'll email it to you.
Well, once again, you know, as Mr. Zimmer's mentioned earlier, I mean, you can see the impact. We had $1.1 million collected, and that's probably for April?
March?
March. So again, you know, thank you for shopping local. As Mr. Miller said a few minutes ago, this is one tax that's doing great work. So thank you to everyone for shopping local, and thank you for supporting 186 and all the school districts within Zanga County.
$29.9 million.
Fantastic. All right, so we're going to move on to 11.1, the Approval of Consent Action Items. Superintendent.
President Mars and members of the Board, I recommend approval of consent action items 11.2 through 11.8 as described in the corresponding resolutions.
All right.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none?
Blissett.
Aye.
Leowulf.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Austin.
I do too, referring from 11.6 abstaining from that vote. I'm an employee of S.I.G. School of Medicine, but I agree to everything else.
Thank you.
Please, please, the minute, please.
All right, so we will move on to 12.1, Approval of... Make sure I don't miss anything. Is that right? Yes. Approval of Personnel Recommendations. Superintendent.
President Mars and members of the Board, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lynn Williams, who's sitting in for Mrs. Sherman this evening. Welcome and thank you for being here.
President Mars, members of the Board, the Superintendent recommends adoption of personnel recommendations as presented with the exception of Page 5, Classified Section Number 2, to be moved to consideration at an upcoming meeting.
All right.
Any discussion? Hearing none?
Leowulf.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Yes, except for Page 4, Letter E, Number 7. I'll abstain on that one.
Austin.
Aye.
Blissett.
Aye.
That is seven i-votes.
And now you made me have to explain why, right? So I will, I will just say that we did move two people into different administrative roles in the district with this vote. One, we were going to, Ms. Chelsea Ziebler is going to be the new principal at Jefferson Middle School. And she was previously the assistant principal slash gifted coordinator at Isle School, but in the past has been a principal in another district, so comes with a lot of experience. She could not be here today. They're on a family vacation, but she'd like to come at the next board meeting. I told her we'd be happy to. And I think similar, Lane Zimmers was named the intern at Franklin Middle School. And that is a move from Lincoln Magnet School, where she's been a teacher for many years, doing a lot of creative curriculum work and has had a lot of opportunities with some fellowships and things of that nature with National Geographic that have been pretty amazing. So she'll bring a really great bright spotlight to our administrative team across the district with her curriculum background. So thank you very much for that.
Next slide.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, so we will move on to 12.2.
Did we vote on?
No, I don't think we voted.
We did vote on that one.
We voted on all.
Yeah, because he abstained. He abstained.
Oh, I didn't see. All right. 12.2, Approval of Change Order for Graham Elementary School. Superintendent.
Mr. Shaver.
Thank you, Superintendent. President Mars, members of the Board, Superintendent recommends adoption of the following resolution, now therefore be resolved. If the Board of Education approves the following change order, it directs the Superintendent to execute the necessary documents on behalf of the Board. And as it says, it's for Graham Elementary, $13,014.46 to be approved. Once we opened the structure at the, over the gym, we decided, we determined that it was necessary to add some structural support to that root frame, the hangings. This is part of the ongoing project there. They're working on those now to get that gym air conditioned. They didn't have air conditioning before. But we did get the rest of the air handling units running in that short little summer that they have. So kudos to the crew company, the crew company for putting people on it again. Sorry, there's some cleanup work and some control work to have to do, but they catered.
So we used partially Health Flight Safety money on this?
That's correct. That's a Health Flight Safety.
But we also, we also use some of the construction.
So it's like a combo, yeah.
We did a construction grant from the state for infrastructure.
$1,000, which maybe is transferred to that.
Okay. All right.
I'll take so.
Sergeant motion.
Sergeant.
Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Mars.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Blissett.
Aye.
Leowulf.
Aye.
That is seven i-votes.
All right, we're going to move on to 12.3, Approval of Change Order for Fairview Elementary School. Superintendent.
Fairview is nearing the end, but we have a change order, Mr. Shaver.
Correct. President Mars, members of the Board, Superintendent recommends adoption of the following resolution, now therefore be resolved. If the Board of Education approves the following change order, it directs the Superintendent to execute the necessary documents on behalf of the Board. And that's where it says for Fairview Elementary. This one is in the amount of $70,609.81 to Schwartz Construction. It's made up of a lot of, quite a few small items that occurred during the undersea items that occurred during the project. Also, a large item, which is about approximately two-thirds of that amount, was to add concrete sidewalks and surfacing to the facility. That's something we chose to do after we pulled the mobile away. We saw that there was an opportunity to provide access to that alley where the cars all line up. They all come in that alley and line up, and they send, and that new door that's by the art room, the music room, will become the feature for those kids to go out to their cars. Car riders will use those doors. So we took the opportunity to add some concrete there. And also, the parking lot side, we took an opportunity to add some concrete to enlarge their, where they have a fall festival set. Gives them some more space in their fall festival. So we thought it was a good use of money to add.
Second.
Any further discussion?
So how close to completion are they with that building, do you think?
Inside, they'll be done in probably two weeks.
Okay. So this is kind of really ramping everything?
Yeah, this is, a lot of the, a lot of these projects that we have going on right now, the interiors will be completed. It's the outside work that will continue.
Is this typical to expect as they all start getting closer to the end, that they would have several different things all in one change order?
Typically, we would have done those separately, though we kind of, on this project, we kind of collected them here. It was an easier account.
So when you talk about outside work, are you talking about, you know, parking lot, playgrounds and?
The concrete work and the landscaping.
And then maybe, any landscaping?
Landscaping being seeding and grading, seeding. They do have a project there that will come, we call it take two, which will be, they had a little memorial garden, and we're going to, we're going to work with them to recreate that memorial garden after, after grading is all finished.
And help me again, there is a threshold to the amount of change orders versus the overall project size, right?
Yeah, you would have to have 10% of the, 10% of the overall contract.
Or far below that.
Yeah, or far. And of course, anything over $10,000.
Thank you. Can I take a motion?
We have a motion.
Oh.
We have a motion, so we just need both.
Let's call for the board.
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Blissett.
Aye.
Leowulf.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
That is seven i-votes.
All right, we're going to move on to 13.1, the next regular session of, for School Board 186 will begin at 5:30 on August 1st, 2022, for executive session. Open session will begin at 5:30. Upcoming district events, Tuesday, tomorrow, July 19th, is the first day of school for Graham and Southern View. August 8th and 9th, our registration at all schools, and I believe, can we register online currently?
Yes, you can, registration is wide open, so anytime. But if you need assistance or need technology, or have any questions, or just want to see your school, it is open on those days for registration.
All right, the first day of school for 186, other than for our balanced calendar schools, will be August 22nd.
I have one more thing. I just wanted to clarify that sales tax question that you had. Unprepared foods are not taxed. So we think about macaroni and cheese. If you go buy noodles and cheese, those two items are not taxed. But if you go to the deli and buy macaroni and cheese that they've already cooked for you to just warm up, that is taxed. So it will not affect our sales. It'll affect the overall tax, but unprepared foods are not, were not subject to the countywide sales tax. And that was always the case because they did not want to make it a regressive tax.
Right.
But I also think that...
The state's tax on groceries is 1%.
Right.
Right, so it's minimal, but so the calculation would show that inflation of all those other items is still going to support an increase in the sales tax. It's kind of where I was at when I was trying to put my spreadsheet together.
But also, I think that that reduction in the tax doesn't apply to like candy or tobacco or alcohol or a bunch of other things.
The stuff you shouldn't do.
Give it a chance to clean up your habit.
If you're addicted to peanut butter cups, it's a problem.
Is there any other further business that board members have to discuss this evening?
I just want to thank our speaker. I know she took off for talking about dyslexia. It's something that we have been talking about as a district and actually spent time doing book studies around. In your last bulletin to the Board, you know that I prepared and sent you out much information about dyslexia and the work that we're doing. So I wouldn't want anybody to think we're not, we're not listening and moving forward with that.
All right, the time is now set. All right, the time is now 7:38. Having no further business to come before the Board, we are adjourned until August 1st, 2022.